Welcome to another meeting of the Lorraine County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorraine County Community College Education Station. The Lorraine County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meeting live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorraine County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Alariah. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
How we all set? Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the September 13th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. The people of Lorraine County join with their brothers and sisters across the nation in mourning the victims of Tuesday's terrorist acts. Our hearts and prayers go out to all who have been touched by this tragedy. In the aftermath of this devastation, we should pay special attention to the stories of heroism that we will hear. In the face of danger and disaster, these heroes have shown the true heart of the American people by responding with bravery, courage, and selflessness. We do, in fact, honor the dead by the ways in which we live our lives. Today's calendar has a statement from Edward Everett Hale which says, I think very appropriately, "Look up and not down; look forward and not back; look out and not in; lend a hand." The Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, in cooperation with our department heads and other elected officials, are asking all county employees who wish to donate blood to do so, and effective immediately until September 21st, we are having this blood drive as our part of trying to show some support for those people who are suffering from this tragedy. I would like to move on to a little more joyful note.
Should we take a moment of silence?
Might be nice. Let us take a moment of silence, and in this moment of silence, let us pray for three things: for peace for our country, for wisdom for our elected officials and those making decisions, and for kindness towards one another. I have a proclamation here in the matter of expressing our appreciation to the senior citizens of the R S V P program, which is Retired Senior Volunteer Program, for 25 years of service to Lorraine County citizens. It reads, "Whereas over the past 25 years, 1,425 caring senior citizens have volunteered their time and talents to assisting Lorraine Countyans in over 100 organizations, businesses, institutions, and schools; and whereas these community leaders have generously given of their skills and expertise by investing $1,156,134 total volunteer hours, and plan to continue to share their years of experience; and whereas we thank each of you for carrying out these duties with competence and enthusiasm; and whereas the senior citizens of the R S V P program help make Lorraine County a wonderful place to live, work, and play; and whereas their entiring efforts and humanitarian kindness will be remembered by all who have been served by their dedication and commitment to volunteering. Now therefore it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Lorraine County that we express appreciation for the faithful conscientious and rewarding service given by the R S V P senior citizens to the county of Lorraine." And Dawn Miller is here this morning to receive this proclamation, and I think Dawn should just take a minute to tell us how we're going to further honor Lorraine County senior citizens at the R S V P banquet. Would you come to the microphone, please?
For me to be here today, a little nervous, but we shall do fine. R S V P is a great organization that uses our volunteers throughout our community. This year, one of our main goals is going to be our school systems to do mentoring and tutoring with our children. Hopefully, in the future, we will broaden our horizons with our volunteers with more educational backgrounds for them. And at this time, again, I'd like to thank the Commissioners and the people that sponsor R S V P very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. At 9:35, we have scheduled a recommendation of the C I C with respect to the request of Ohio Metalurgical for a 3.5 million bond issue. The C I C met this morning. Melanie Long, oh, there you are, Melanie. Would you come forward, please, from our Community Development Department? We'll give a brief overview of what the C I C's recommendation is regarding this issue.
Good morning. I'm Melanie Long, L-O-N-G, from the Community Development Department. This is, Ohio Metalurgical has applied for a $3.5 million economic development bond. This bond is for new equipment, some building, renovation, and for bond financing. Also, they will create and retain 49 jobs. From Ohio Metalurgical, we have John Gaidash from, I'm sorry, Buckingham, Doolittle, and Burrows. I am so sorry. We have Steve Hammersmith, and from Squires, we have Hannah Jennings, who could have comments if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hammersmith, would you just like to briefly outline again, the presentation that was made to the C I C Board this morning?
Yes, I will. Steve Hammersmith, Bond Counsel and Company Counsel for Ohio Metalurgical. This is $3,500,000 inducement for industrial development bonds to be issued to benefit Ohio Metalurgical that's located on Clark Street in Alariah. Ohio Metalurgical is in the business of heat treating steel, and they're looking to acquire additional equipment and make some minor renovations to their existing facility to accommodate that equipment. You may recall that Ohio Metalurgical approached the county in 1997 to do a bond issue which was used for an expansion of their facility and some additional equipment, and due to good business fortunes, they're back again. And the benefit to Ohio Metalurgical, this financing is a lower interest rate. They're negotiating with First Merit Bank for a letter of credit to secure these bonds, and they expect to have that commitment from First Merit next week. And assuming things go as planned, we will try to issue the bonds probably around November 1 of this year, and we just received a via cap allocation for a portion of this inducement, $2.7 million, from the state of Ohio, and we'll use that to go forward in the fall.
Thank you, and John Gaidash from Ohio Metalurgical.
So I'm John Gaidash from Ohio Metalurgical. I'm a Partner and General Manager. This project is a, it's kind of nice for Lorraine County because our customer is also a Lorraine County business, and it's a, it's new business for both of us. So it's allowing a pretty, a fairly large expansion on our part over a six-year period, and also an expansion of the other business over that same time period. Like Steve said, we're, we're doing, going to be heat treating some parts that go into compressors for refrigeration units, and it's a new, high-efficients, highly efficient design, so hopefully the demand will grow as it has been projected. We've been in Alariah for over 50 years, a family-owned business, and the last bond offering we went through was very helpful to us just because of the lower interest rate, and hopefully this one will be the same.
Thank you, John. And Hannah Jennings from Squires Sanders and Dempsey, representing the county.
Thank you. Squires Sanders and Dempsey, as you said, is Counsel to the county as the proposed issuer. We reviewed the application to the C I C, found everything in order, and will continue to be involved on behalf of the county.
Thank you, Hannah. And it was the recommendation of the C I C this morning to the Board of Commissioners that we approve this request as outlined. Does the Board have any questions?
They have.
I'll therefore move that we approve the recommendation of the C I C as outlined.
Second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you move on to the regular order of business, please?
Under resolution, so I need a motion to approve the Job and Family Services bills for payment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
You best be.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Appropriations.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I believe there was one advance this morning for $44,626.95 to the Children and Families Council for administrative expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Travel expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Approving bills for payment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Have authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Are we having an executive session, Mr. Corden?
I will be requesting executive session. Do so under my business.
Do we want to hold this until after that?
Yes.
Okay, with you.
Sure.
All right, we'll hold item number nine.
Okay. Number 10, to approve and enter into contract between the Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services and Lorraine County Transit for a new medical transportation agreement and amending the current agreement. Transportation will be provided to clients in need of diagnostic and preventive medical treatments. Resolution is needed for the shared reimbursement from state and federal funds. Payment will be made from allocated transportation expenses account. The amendment to the current agreement is requesting an increase of $5,000 to cover the transportation through the middle of September, as the billing from Lorraine County Transit had been increasing over the past months. The new agreement will cover a period from September 15, 2001, through June 30, 2002. The end date is being changed so as to line this contract up with the end of the agency's fiscal year. The total value of this contract will be $45,000, and rates for the contract will remain the same as last year's at $17 per one-way trip, $10 per no-show, including ADA-certified clients, and $1 per extra family member.
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, this is $45,000, and I think a couple of weeks ago, there was another contract for $150,000 for jobs in family services. This gives the total amount of almost $200,000. And being that we're working on the new budget for next year, I'd like to see a detailed report on the revenue and expenditures for the transit.
I'll take that for action, Commissioner. You want a detailed report on their revenue and expenditures?
Right.
I'll talk with Ms. Moore and have her bow that over.
Okay, thank you, John.
This is money coming from families, Job and Family Services, correct?
Yes.
To help subsidize some of the expenses for Lorraine County Transit?
Well, it doesn't necessarily subsidize the expenses.
Not subsidize, but...
I mean, it, it's a fee for service.
Right.
The services are provided and this is the payment.
It's a revenue stream for...
Yes. Yes, it's a revenue stream, but it's not, it's not a revenue stream that was going to use to support LCT. It's payment for service for buses picking up people, so...
Well, that's still revenue.
Okay.
And I'd like to know what other revenue sources they have, too.
Okay.
That's why I'd like a detailed report on revenue and expenditures.
I'll have to prepare for you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Have authorized the Lorraine County Community Development Department to file an application with their Ohio Department of Development in the amount of $30,000 for a micro-enterprise loan program for technical assistance and training, as well as business loans between $250 to $20,000.
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. Melanie, is she still here? Melanie might be able to answer these questions. Let me find my information here. The general fund money is used for businesses within Alariah and Lorraine, the cities of Alariah and Lorraine, correct?
That's true.
And when I talked with Ron Twining, I believe it was yesterday, he mentioned that there was communication with Alariah and Lorraine to contribute some funding for this program?
Yes, sir.
Being that we're helping residents in those areas. Explain to the, for the public's information how it is that the county is funding Alariah and Lorraine cities.
Well, the state grant money is for Lorraine County everywhere outside of Alariah and Lorraine because they are enterprise-owned cities, so we can't use our money. They apply directly to the federal government for money, so we can't use the state money for, to finance the program there. But it was our understanding that the Commissioners wanted to have the program countywide, and so we wanted to offer it to businesses in Lorraine and Alariah. So to offer it to businesses in Lorraine and Alariah, we went to the general fund to get money to do the technical assistance and training and administration costs for participants in the program that are from those two areas.
And 50% of the businesses that we've helped to date have been from those two areas.
This is correct.
Let me expand upon something. The city of Alariah and Lorraine, what they are is entitlement cities.
Yes. I'm sorry. Entitlement.
So therefore, we're not able to spend certain funds that we receive. Now, we, we had agreement from the state to allow us to use CDBG monies last year. Those monies have to be used outside of Lorraine and Alariah, and then they have to be used for low to moderate income. What we're looking at putting together this year is applying for $30,000 from the state. We're also asking to take money from, for them to allow us to take money once again from CDBG funds.
Is it CDBG or revolving loan?
Well, actually, it's revolving loan, but which originates with CDBG money, so they're under the same restriction as the CDBG, but more aptly stated, it's revolving loan. You're correct, Commissioner. Those monies would be restricted. In order for us to provide loans into Lorraine and Alariah, and continue to do so on a countywide basis, we would need the infusion of some general fund cash. Mindful that we're asking for $50,000 from the general fund. Out of that $50,000, $30,000 will be used to provide loans in Alariah and Lorraine, so it'll be a match to $30,000 we're asking to use out of revolving loan from the state. That'll give a balance between the, the areas that we cannot spend revolving loan and the entitlement cities. The other $20,000 will be used for administration of the program. We're also drawing down a few hundred thousand dollars a year from the banks that have partnered with us, so they're looking to us, you know, for our input into this program as well as theirs. I hope that it gives you a little information on that.
Yeah, but I think what I'd like to see is a more aggressive approach. Maybe the two cities don't realize that there is a need within those two cities to assist small businesses. You know, small businesses have a tendency of growing if they're, you know, if they're profitable, and I believe that they should recognize the fact and assist with some funding.
Well, we've gotten a lot of cooperation from the city of Alariah, it is true, and they have committed to participate in the program, but not from, we haven't received the same commitment from the city of Lorraine as of yet.
But Alariah hasn't committed to participate economically, correct?
They have.
They have?
They have.
How much are they committed to?
Last year, they committed, I mean, for this fiscal year, 2001, was $2,000 and...
But they haven't, we haven't received any funding from them.
We just haven't drawn down on that money yet.
We, we also have a bit of a problem, difference of opinion with the city of Lorraine right now concerning this. They were originally supposed to work the micro-enterprise loan program, and they, they, for various reasons, had two or three years to get it going, and they didn't, and we stepped in and we took over that, and they're, they don't even want to come to the table and be part of the micro-enterprise loan program at all with us. Now, we're still making loans into Lorraine because Lorraine's a big part of, of the county, but they're not participating even non-economically with us on micro-enterprise loan. They, they said they don't want to be involved.
Who made that determination?
I believe that determination was made in their Community Development Department.
I don't think their Community Development Department should, is authorized to make that determination, are they?
I, I can't speak to that, Commissioner, I...
Well, I'm, I'm just generally, it seems to me that there's a council and administration there, and the Community Development Department works under them. That would be my thought.
I would like to see our department send a letter to the city council, and then a follow-up with a meeting with the city council.
May I make a recommendation? Normally, we, we do our dealings with, through the Mayor's Department to go to council. Can we approach it that way first?
I think that would be better approach.
But I'd like the information passed on or CC'd to the city council. I want to make sure the city council is aware of what we're requesting to, and how many people are being served in the city of Alariah.
And by the way, speaking of being served, Commissioner Vassie, you asked her a report, and Melanie put together a very extensive report regarding who's being served and the cost, et cetera. Very good report. Thank you, Melanie. Any further comments or questions?
I have none. Thank you, Melanie.
I, whatever you did, huh? Okay.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Received the annual report prepared and submitted by the county prosecutor's office on the number of criminal prosecutions pursued to final convictions and sentence from the period of September 1, 2000, to August 31, 2001. The number of criminal prosecutions for this period was 1,536, and this report is being filed pursuant to Ohio Revice Code Section 309.16.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Had to consider the request of Lorraine County Sheriff to purchase eight vehicles as part of the fleet replacement program for 2002 for Crown Victoria's Police Package, sedans, estimate of cost, $204,528, general fund, and a request to purchase a transport van in the estimated amount of $25,621, and that will be paid from the jail tax funds.
Sheriff Stamatoy, would you like to come forward and plead your case?
Morning, Commissioners and everyone else. I want to state that I brought with me Captain Jim Zdowski, who's head of my law enforcement division, who also used to be the vehicle maintenance coordinator at the sheriff's office. I have my chief deputy, Tim Mahar, and also my vehicle maintenance coordinator, Bob Iskey, who's also the only worker that I have that works on these vehicles. He's a coordinator and a worker. Just wanted to state, since 1994, the Commissioners and the sheriff's office initiated the fleet replacement program, and this program has worked very well. At one time, we purchased used state patrol vehicles with 80,000 miles plus. Several years ago, the county's insurance agent, Corsa, recommended that this practice cease for safety reasons, and recommended purchasing new vehicles. In the year 2000, the sheriff's office patrol division logged over 1 million miles for services throughout the county. Approximately three years ago, the sheriff was instructed by the county administrator through the county commissioners that a set number of vehicles should be requested by the sheriff's office so as to budget for these vehicles properly. In the past, we have requested 14 vehicles, 10 vehicles, six and five were asked for. In order to properly run the program, it was decided that eight vehicles would be requested annually. We currently have 52 marked vehicles for the fleet, which includes the road patrol, civil division, and administrative staff. At this time, we wish to remove nine vehicles, which are one 1995, five 1995s, and three 1996 vehicles, due to age and high mileage. The vehicles that are removed will be sold at the county auction, with the money going into the general fund. I presently have one vehicle maintenance coordinator who works on all of these vehicles, and he does an excellent job. We do not buy new vehicles for the detectives or the command staff. Used vehicles are recycled to these units, and when age and mileage catch up to these, they are also sold at the county auction. These eight vehicles that must be ordered in a timely manner for the state bid in October, with the orders being closed in November. This is for the arrival in the spring, so time is of the essence when ordering these cars. The fleet replacement program has proved to be cost-effective, and it saved the county monies by buying new vehicles. Keeping vehicles too long costs more repairs and service costs, and also is a safety factor for the deputies and the citizens alike. More services are demanded of the sheriff's office each day by the great citizens of this county. These eight cruisers will maintain our fleet in service. The sheriff's office provides a service to the citizens of Lorraine County. We are a people-oriented business. The vehicle to a patrol officer is a necessity like a computer to an office worker. I need not mention the horrible acts that happened in the city of New York this past Tuesday. My officers are the first line of defense between the criminal element and the citizens of Lorraine County, and will be the first to respond. When these terrorist acts happened, my officers beefed up security at the courthouse, the administration building, the emergency management 911 buildings, and the Lorraine County airport, and we were prepared to respond anywhere in the county, but we need reliable transportation equipment to do our jobs. When I was over here in the spring getting funds for additional deputies for the court and security purposes, Commissioner Vassie asked then if I needed additional cruisers for these officers. I stated that I didn't, but I do need the cruisers, which are requested annually in the budget, which are the eight vehicles. The jetliner that crashed in Pennsylvania was reported in Cleveland airspace, so the potential to happen in Lorraine County is real. Yesterday afternoon, the FAA reported a plane taking off from Arlington, Ohio, went into Cuyahoga County airspace, and Cleveland police helicopter followed it to Columbia Airport, where my deputies were dispatched and they intercepted this vehicle when it landed there. And the FAA is investigating that also, that we took a report on. Now is not the time to cut equipment or services at the sheriff's office. I have asked for eight vehicles because this is what is needed for the safety of my deputies and the citizens of Lorraine County. I do want to point out that one article that was in the Chronicle on 8/24, where Budget Director John Rokasi stated, "A large portion of the budget will pay for criminal justice activities and social ills. The budget reflects what we are as a society. Let us not forget what the numbers tell us." And obviously, that's the criminal element out there in today's society, including these terrorist acts. And as our budget is for this year, $6 million, and I know that's the third highest, but I think for protection of the citizens of this county, that it's not absorbent or anything. I only ask for what I need, and I try not to ask for any more. And I do need these eight vehicles.
Thank you, Sheriff. Questions from the members of the Board?
I think, I'm sure you're, you're aware that since '95, we've purchased 46 new vehicles for the sheriff's department?
Yes, question.
And that was over a million dollars right there. And this year, we only have $120,000 budgeted for, to replace all vehicles, so that's not just the sheriff's, but all the other vehicles under the county also. I don't know how my colleagues feel about it, but I, I think we have to stay within our budget, and that's where I have some concern.
Once again, my concern is, like I say, we're the first line of defense there, and I do need the eight vehicles, and while you budget only $120,000, I don't know why, but I requested eight vehicles, which is about $230,000 in my budget.
So are you saying that you're going to request eight vehicles every year? That we should be budgeting for eight new vehicles every year?
That's correct, Commissioner, because three years ago, you were the ones asking questions, saying you should have a set amount of vehicles that you asked for.
But...
And to replace in our fleet replacement program, we need eight vehicles to do that.
I'm not sure if we meant just the sheriff's department or all, the fleet within, within our...
No, that was told in the sheriff's office. Sheriff Mahoney had told me that personally, that Virgil Monteen told him that we need to request a set number of vehicles, and eight was decided on at that point.
I'm not aware of that, and I know that we had a resolution, but the resolution never stated anything about replacing that number of vehicles. And you have a total of 98 vehicles out there now, correct? Those are with forfeited vehicles and drug task force and undercover?
I can answer that. Several of the vehicles, what we consider sheriff's department fleet are vehicles that we purchase or continually use for road patrol division. Yes, we do have vehicles, extra vehicles for our department. We have SWAT units. Drug task force are all forfeited vehicles, which are basically, the county does not pay for those vehicles. What we're looking at in this situation here is strictly vehicles that are used for road patrol purposes. Our SWAT vehicle is a donated vehicle. The supplemental vehicles for SWAT are all confiscated vehicles. They're not used for a daily thing. They're trucks, or armored vehicles, things like that. We have certain vans that are donated vehicles. This here is a continuing process of just marked cars for patrol purposes. That's all we're looking at. What we try to do is each year, we reevaluate the fleet. As mileage starts going up on a Road Patrol vehicle, at that point in time, we may pull that vehicle, de-identify it and give it to detectives because it's not being used for emergency purposes on a daily basis. We ran into this problem several years ago when we had to use cars and it was coming to a crossroads of how safe these are. And that's when Corsa come out and recommended that Sheriff's Department, Police Departments do not use, use vehicles. So that's why we entered the new car program since 1994. Granted, the cost has come up. Ford is the only player in town right now. They've escalated the cost on it. But what we did, decided to do because of economics is come to a figure of eight vehicles. We felt that eight vehicles can get us through year after year with a constant evaluation process of how to get the most use of our cars. What's happening now is we've got cars with 190,000 miles into the fleet that are becoming a danger to the officer to use, plus at the same time, when we take these cars, recycle them out to an auction, the value goes down. We've been averaging about $1,500 a car in auctions to get back to the county. It's not a lot of money, but it's a lot more money than what we used to get at $200 or $300 a car because of used vehicles. And what we're trying to do is, we're watching the money. We're watching to see how we can do this. We recycle equipment from car to car to car. But what we're trying to do is after four years, it's actually becoming a dangerous situation to have that car out on the road because we had that years ago. That's why we settled, it was an agreement back and forth that we worked on to settle on eight cars that we would do our best to maintain with eight cars a year, even though at times it, it cuts us back. We could probably use more cars. We're being called on more and more and more for patrol, more and more different things to do. It's just taxing our cars. As the Sheriff said, we had over a million miles logged last year. This is continually escalating.
Excuse me, there's, I know that according to the Sheriff's letter over here, marked fleet, like you said, that these are just for marked cars.
Right.
It consists of 52 vehicles.
Right.
How many deputies do we have, Road Patrol?
I don't know the exact number of that.
Road Patrol is about 42 or 43 right now.
Okay, if you have 42 or 43 Road Patrol and these vehicles are used for that and you have 52 vehicles and we bought 46 new ones, I don't understand.
You also have court going back and forth every single day. We have state trips going back.
But is the van used for that?
Not all the time, a van's not used. We use vehicles too for this transportation.
There's a lot of times where we have to transport one or two people here to different facilities. Economically, it's not sound to use a one-ton van to do that. So a lot of times, a car's brought in or a medical transport, a car's used for that.
But aren't the deputies the one assigned to these vehicles?
We have different deputies assigned. We have fleet cars, then we have some support cars. What is happening is that we have cars spread out all over the place. And, and the cars that, like I says, what we're doing now is the eight cars, these are going to replace cars that are currently active in the fleets that are being used probably 16 hours a day. We have several cars. What we maintain is what we consider a fleet car, which is a car that's used by several different officers. This, we don't have an overabundance of cars. There's times, because you got to take into consideration when vehicles are down for service. If we don't have a practical number of vehicles, then that taxes another car and that's the situation we had years ago. Cars were running 24 hours a day, which is a dangerous situation for the car and the officer because instead of cars coming in for service once every three months, it's once every three weeks. That escalates the cost of repairs. It escalates the cost of downtime, labor, manpower. It's just a continuing process. That's why when they settled on the eight, we felt that to be a sound, sound economically, we can maintain with eight cars and do our best to maintain the services we need to service. But given the situations over the past year, it's, it's just taxing us. That's why we're, we're asking for the eight cars. These are replacement cars. It's not for additions. It's for replacement.
Okay, so that's a change. You're looking to replace nine, nine vehicles with eight?
Correct.
Okay. You're, um, it's not in your budget this year, correct? And that's why you're coming?
I requested it in my budget.
Okay, so let me ask you this because I'm working with the Budget Director prior for the next 60 days. I talked to you about this. I've talked to Sheriff Stomati about this, which is I want to sit down and talk to all the departments and I hope they're listening because if they're going to talk to me, I hope they're going to be frank, because I'm about as frank as you can get, which is...
I thought you were Dave.
Dave, I'll be frank today. I'll be whoever you want, but if you're, if it's in the budget, then I can understand that you know the cars are in the budget, the money should be in the budget. And so therefore, I hope for the next two to three years, if you guys are projecting out what you're going to need, I hope that the cars are in there so you don't have to come for us like this and hopefully the numbers will, you know, financially will be in there and you don't have to come to us to get the additional funds. My understanding is that's how the budget works. Is that correct, John? I mean, if, it would, it should have been a PO order then if it was within their budget, correct?
Well, there was a request for eight, for, in effect, 120,000 approved, Commissioner.
But for who though? For the county, for the, just the Sheriff's Department?
No, it's not just for the Sheriff's Department. For the entire county.
Okay, so that was approved from last year's budget?
Correct.
Okay.
So.
So there was a, there was an error there or was that just cut back?
Well, there were other items that impacted that budget, Commissioner. But the thinking was at the time that we had bought several cars in past years that we would allocate less for this purpose this year and if other monies were needed, it would come out of unappropriated.
Okay, and how much do we have in unappropriated right now?
We have approximately $2 million.
And we have $2 million in unappropriated funds?
That's correct.
And they were decided that if they needed the additional cars, that would come out of unappropriated funds? That was decided last year?
Yep, that, excuse me, exactly. That was decided during the budget time.
Okay. Now, okay, I'm gonna throw another one out, yeah. The state has a billion dollars in a rainy day fund. Do we have a rainy day fund?
Yes, we do.
Okay. That's not an uncom, that's just a rainy day fund, correct?
That's, that has been appropriated in case the economy should go down. That's correct. Approximately $2.1 million.
Okay, that's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Well, I think we need to make some kind of a determination. We need to give some direction of how this is to proceed. Do we want to do this today or do we want to review this further?
I'm, I'll, I'm, I'll make a motion. I'll support. I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem making the decision today.
Excuse me, who pays for the, to fuel the vehicles? Does that come out of your budget?
Yes, it does.
All right, if the fuel goes up as the projection, TV and radio is projecting, government's projecting, this fuel's gonna skyrocket. What's going to happen with your budget then?
I don't think the...
Going to have to come back and get some more money?
I don't think fuel's gonna go up. I think just the opposite. You have 10% of the country's budget or 10% of the fuel being used is by jet service and right now, there is none. I think what people panicked on Tuesday, like buying gas was just that a panic. I think what you're going to see now is just the opposite. Gas prices will be coming down because we will be seeing a surplus soon.
Well, we don't know for sure.
That's, that's what I'm...
Just answer that question. We're in, I guess the job of responding to calls when there's burglaries, alarms going off, that's just part of our job. We have to respond. You have to use gas. You have to use equipment.
But you may not have enough in your budget.
That's what police and fire do.
That's going to be another concern.
I will second the motion by Commissioner Moore to authorize the purchase of the eight vehicles and the transport van.
Any more discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
I'd to advertise the following notice to bidders on these various projects. First by the Alaria Township Anthony Road Project in Alaria Township. The project estimate, $80,000. Need to post the notice in the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on September 14th and 21st, 2001. And for the city of Amherst, the old post office ADA improvement project, project estimate, $33,500. And I'd to publish this notice in the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on September 24th and October 1st, 2001.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd to approve the request from RA Joseph Construction Company of Avon, Ohio for additional time to complete the extension of the Eaton Township Elevator Project as a CDPG-funded fiscal year '99 project. The original completion date was August 31st, 2001, but there is a delay in delivery of the elevator and the requested date of extension is December 11th, 2001. Lorraine County Community Development Department has reviewed and recommends approval.
Also move.
Second?
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd to authorize the Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services to purchase two turnkey inspection systems from MAP Software Incorporated of Cincinnati, Ohio. These systems would be used by the childcare unit to improve the accuracy, efficiency and timeliness of onsite home inspections of type B home childcare providers. This product is already being used by other county departments of Job and Family Services. The agency has presented this information to the Lorraine County Data Processing Board for the hardware components and has received its approval at their last meeting. The purchase would be as follows, for two turnkey inspection systems at $4,495 each for a total of $8,990 and two of the staff training at $400 for a total of $800 for a grand total of $9,790. This purchase is a component of the state fiscal year 2002 childcare quality plan and will be paid for, with childcare quality allocations.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd to authorize a relu, uh, excuse me, a resolution of intent to approve the, the final funding contracts as recommended by Juan Crespo, Director of the Children and Families Council for the Help Me Grow Initiative fiscal year 2002. No funds will be dispersed until such time the contracts are complete and executed by the Board of Commissioners are listed as follows. Contracts, Catholic Charities, the HMG Award, $101,360. The tan of portion will be 63.59% of the award at $64,454.82. The Alaria City Health Department, the HMG Award, $300,800. The tan of portion, $191,278.72. Lighthouse Family, the award for $141,519. The tan of portion, $89,991.93. Lincoln Counseling Center, the awards for $64,466. The tan of portion, $40,993.93. Listening Advantage, the award $9,000. Tan of portion, $5,723.10. Lorraine City Health Department, the award for $254,736. The tan of portion would be $161,986.62. Lorraine County Health Department, award $178,200. Tan of portion, $113,317.38. Music Therapy, award $4,900. Tan of portion, $3,115.91. The Neighborhood House Association, HMG Award, $180,000. Tan of portion, $114,462. Our Lady of the Wayside, award $27,360. Tan of portion, $17,398.22. Re and Rehabilitation Systems Incorporated, award $8,393. Tan of portion, $5,337.11. Grand total of the, all the awards would be $1,270,734 and grand total for the tan of portions, $808,059.75.
This is the list of the recommended providers for funding the Help Me Grow Initiative. And Mr. Cortez, would you like to expand upon this a little bit?
The, we're doing this a little different this year. I changed the resolution a bit. In previous years, you had simply made the award and we would have some problems with contracting and the paperwork catching up. I asked Madam Clerk to change the resolution for an intent. I don't want to see any of these funds dispersed until we have contracts in place that have been approved. It may delay the process a teeny bit, but I think it'll also inspire people to get the paperwork in here and it's something we've been having a problem with. I also, at this juncture, would like to ask that Madam Clerk modify the resolution where it says, recommended by Juan Crespo. I'd like it to be recommended by the Children and Family First Council. They had a subcommittee that selected these vendors and recommended these awards and I think that we should note that the council is the one making these recommendations where the administrative agent. We do the, the legwork, but the recommendations come from this council.
I find that...
Okay. If there's any other questions, I, I can try to speak to those. But once again, this is the council's recommendation and I would urge the Commissioners to support the Children and Family First Council process by passing a resolution of intent so we can do the contracts.
Also move. Second?
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez.
I need to establish the contribution rates for the Lorraine County Healthcare Plan administered by the Board of Commissioners. The new rates established are for the employer share only. For the medical, dental, drug and vision, the family plan will increase from $497 to $527 per month. The single plan will go from $225 to $240 per month. For medical only, the family plan will increase from $425 to $440 per month. And the single plan, from $185 to $195 per month. Due to the current trends in the industry and review by, and recommendation by the county administrator, these rates will be effective January 1st, 2002.
Mr. Cortez, would you like to expand upon this?
It's a rather simple principle, Commissioners. Inflation isn't great, but it is up. I've been watching the cash flows in our self, self-funded healthcare pool. While we are doing well, I want to anticipate some increases for the next fiscal year. These increases are moderate. They represent about 5.3%. We haven't had a rate increase since 19, I want to say it was 90, 98 was the last rate increase for the 99 year. Prior to that, we didn't have an increase for four years. So in order to keep the fund healthy and ensure that we have adequate cash flow in that fund, I'm asking for a, a slight increase in the rates. What I'm also asking though for is that the employer pick up that increase in, in the rates. Right now, we operate an 80/20 copay plan. That is, our employees pay 20% of their healthcare cost up to a maximum out of their pocket on a family plan of $1,200. On an individual plan, that would be $600, which is 100 deductible and 500 maximum out of pocket. So they're already occurring, I wouldn't say significant, but, but, but an amount of expense if they utilize the plan. They're also paying $36 per month towards the premium of that product, which comes out to about $430 a year. They're about 400, I don't have the math done, $432 they're about. I think that they're picking up enough copayment of their insurance. I think they're contributing enough to have the effect of, of keeping utilization down. One of the reasons why you have the 80/20 and the premium sharing is to induce people to utilize their healthcare in a judicious manner when they need to. That is to keep them from running to the doctor simply for, for the minor sniffles or to the emergency room. And I think that we're doing real well with our plan. We haven't had a lot of costs increased over the years and I, I think it, it, it should be picked up by the employer. So that is my recommendation. The rates that are listed here, which are, which represent an increase of $30 in the family plan and $15 in the single plan for the medical with full ancillary care. It's not significant, but I think that the employer should pick that portion up. I think the employees already contribute enough to the plan. Thank you.
Jim, is this for union and non-union? All employees?
I, I, I want it to be for all employees. We would have to do a sidebar with our union employees, but...
Do you have to do that before we approve this?
No, Commissioner. I, I've never met a union yet that wouldn't take something that was given to them. So I'm, I'm sure they'd be very happy to do a sidebar for us to pick up a little more So I'm sure they'd be very happy to do a sidebar for us to pick up a little more cost today.
I understand that, but I'm just wondering if it should be done before we do this? And that's one question that you've already answered.
Okay.
John, this is not within the budget either. It's not budgeted.
I did an analysis, Commissioner, very recently, actually late yesterday. This would have an impact of approximately $213,000 on the general fund, but there is funds available in that particular account already that would cover that appropriation.
Okay, it is in that account then?
Yes, it is. So it can be covered adequately.
Okay, thanks, John.
You're welcome.
Also move for approval is outlined.
Let me, since Commissioner...
I'll second.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
One last issue, and Commissioner Vassie raised an important point, and I took it for granted it shouldn't have. I'd ask to modify this resolution to include a line to authorize the Human Resources Director to meet with the bargaining units and to negotiate a sidebar extending this benefit to those unions that we have cognizance of.
Okay, thank you.
I will include that as part of my motion. Is it okay as part of your second?
Yeah, it's okay.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
On behalf of the employees, thank you, commissioners.
You're welcome. I need to reestablish the incarceration fees within Lorraine County for housing municipal ordinance inmates from $55 per diem to $65 per diem effective January 1st, 2002. I'd authorize the prosecutor's office to prepare new contracts for the contracting cities.
Mr. Cortez?
Last year, we increased the fee for these services to $75 based upon cost analysis completed by the Sheriff's Department. Due to a great outcry from some of our end-users of this service, the board felt compelled to temporarily reduce that back to 55. We had been charging $35 to the municipalities that use our jail. The general fund was picking up $35 of that cost. When the general fund stopped picking up the $35, we raised the rate to 75 based upon the recommendations from the sheriff at that time. I'm asking that the board revisit this issue and that we incrementally increase that fee to get to where the cost is for the jail. Now, while I don't want, while I was very, excuse me, while I had thought of recommending that we go to the $75, I thought the step approach would work. We need to get this fee to where our costs are. Now, I realize some of the municipalities saying we have a jail tax levy and that they're paying for the jail. We all are paying for the jail, and yes, they are, but there's additional costs with the jail. And the jail tax levy is only one component of the funding of that jail. Another component is charging the inmate fees to the municipalities that charge under municipal ordinances. They get that money back. That money comes into their coffers. We're asking them to pay for that incarceration fee based upon the money that they're collecting by charging under municipal ordinances. If they go ahead and charge under state ordinances, we are required by code to house those prisoners at no cost to those municipalities. They make that decision in the municipality. So therefore, I'm asking for this increase. I expect that you may get some discontentment with that, but it's only, you know, $10, and I will be back here next year asking for the additional $10 or if we do another cost analysis, a few dollars more to get us to where that fee needs to be. I think it's fair, and I think we need to do that.
Sheriff, is it still at 75? Jim said last year the cost was 75. Has it increased any within that year?
We haven't done another cost analysis within the last year, but I'd say it's still around $75.
About 75? So we're still going to be picking up $10 per inmate?
Yes, Commissioner. And next year, when I ask for an increase, I will ask the sheriff at that time to do a cost analysis to get the rate that's applicable at that time. Right now, because I wasn't going to last year's rate, I didn't feel that we needed it because we weren't even going to get to last year's rate. And I know the costs have not come down that much. I'm comfortable with it.
Well, I hope that the municipalities realize that the county is still picking up a portion of this.
I understand, Commissioner.
Sheriff, we've had discussions in the past regarding possibility of passing some of these costs off the users of these, of our facilities. Have you pursued that anymore? Because I think in some, was it in Pennsylvania you were looking?
There's some in Ohio. Admitting counting, they charge $60 a day to the inmates. It's just that you will take some heat over that, Commissioner. Obviously, you took some heat over the phone contract. We're asking people to pay for things like that.
That heat don't bother me.
Yeah, and I understand that. And I've seen myself that they have to pay their fair shares like everyone else.
Do you need direction from this board to do something like that? Or is that something that has to be implemented through the Sheriff's Department?
There is sections in the code that we are looking at presently, and I will work on something to do it for the board.
Well, how can people pay when most people that are in there are indigent to start with? Where do you get the money from them? How do you get the money from them?
Well, most people aren't, there's a lot of people come to jail jobs. That's why we have the Work Police Program, which makes money for the county. They go out and work on their job sites so they can keep their job, which is a great program. But they pay one hour's day that paid back to the county.
Yeah, but how can you charge some people and not charge others?
You charge everybody, just not everybody's collectible.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Everybody, I'm talking about people that are on the work, who have jobs, that go out to jail. And it's only for certain crimes, obviously, you know, for aggravated murder. You're not going to let somebody go out to work.
We appreciate that, Sheriff.
We're talking, don't be, and the ones that mind the clock.
The commissioner's based upon the theory of the ability to pay, and it's quite common concept of the ability of people to pay. Those that can pay, you make them pay. It may not sound equitable, but that's a concept that's used in auto service.
May not sound equitable to whom?
Well, it may not sound equitable, well, to some people.
All I'm saying is that what you do is you have a consistent policy. You charge everybody, and you leave it at that. And that's, I'm not looking to take in people's homes. You know, there's no need to do that. I'm not talking about an aggressive collection policy, but to have some form of collection policy to help offset some of these fees that the whole county's paying for, for the percentage of the abusers, or I should say, the people using the facility.
Because we have inmates that come in, or sometimes they got $1,000, $2,000 in their pocket.
Yeah, when they come in, yeah.
There's such a thing as a booking fee, which you can charge. Some sheriffs, they charge you $25 to book you in, $25 to book you out.
But again, do you need, do you not need direction from this board? But this is something you have to present to us to see if this is a discussion we should...
Yes, there is sections in the Ohio revised code that allow you to do this, and we will research that.
Who determines whether or not they can afford to pay? The courts do, don't they? We have, I mean, that's just like fines or anything. Who determines if they're indigent for an indigent attorney?
Well, obviously, like you said, if they are truly indigent, they have no money, how can you force them to pay?
Yeah, but who determines? Who determines that? We have to go back to the court.
Obviously, you'd have to get some opinions from the prosecutor's office, because once you implement one of these programs, the prosecutor has to become involved in it also.
And then you could, if you go that far, you might as well talk about medical, too. Some inmates have insurance, and yet we pay for them if they have to go to hospitals through the county.
But I believe we do that now. The Pudong Sheriff...
Yes, they have insurance. We aggressively pursue that and we charge their insurance.
Right. So is there a timeframe when you'll get back to this board with?
I can come back within a month or so.
Okay, could you? I appreciate it.
So you're going to formulate a recommendation to us about recouping costs?
Yes, I will.
For some of these fees here?
Yes, and we are collecting some now, just so you understand. There's a medical copay out there at the jail right now.
Okay.
That if they go to sick call to see the doctor, they pay $5.
Okay.
If they want an aspirin, it used to be free, they'd get quarter of that. And obviously, if they're indigent, can't pay it, then you can't charge.
Okay, goes back to, it all started with Mr. Cortez saying, "We're going to get some heat." So you know what the people causing the heat, they're going to have to maybe pay some heat. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff. Yes, what is the pleasure of the board regarding the item number 19?
My support.
Second?
Any more discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye. Thank you.
Any comments, Mr. Cortez?
First, I'd like to request an executive session for the express purpose of new hires under the Sunshine Law. Secondly, yesterday, I, Mary Lugolski, Ron Twining, and John Rokasie had the privilege of meeting with Senator Bonnovich's district representative for the Northeast Ohio area. I was pleased to say that we presented some issues directly affecting Lorraine County that his representative is going to share with the senator. One of the things that we talked about most was the issues going on with Ford Motor Company and the plants up on the lake, and our concerns for loss of manufacturing jobs in Lorraine County, and that we felt that the voice of the senator should be heard on these issues in support of Lorraine County and our initiatives here. Senator Bonnovich's representative agreed. He asked that we write a letter to him and the senator detailing our concerns and that he would ask the senator to at least make his voice be known and add to us to support retaining those plants here in Lorraine County. Hopefully, that'll get us some attention, but we're concerned about this issue. If you're not aware, the news on the wire has been that Ford's looking to close old plants and small plants. We happen to have one of each. We happen to have a very old plant. We happen to have a very small plant by standards. So, you know, we're concerned, and our residents are concerned. And I'm going to have that letter prepared, drafted, and I would hope that the commissioner would sign that and send it along to Senator Bonnovich and ask for his help and ask him to contact Ford and loan his assistance.
What about the other companies that are downsizing in Lorraine County?
Well, I'm concerned with all companies, obviously, but...
I have a list of maybe four or five that I would like to include in there.
As you see fit, Commissioner. I just wanted to let you know that we were making a plea on behalf of Lorraine County.
If we're going to make a plea, can we include Governor Taft and Senator Dwyane?
We can include George W., if you'd like.
He's all busy right now.
Whatever it takes to get support to keep businesses here, regardless of whether they go south to San Antonio, or they go to the Pacific Rim, or they move to Illinois, they're still leaving Ohio, and they're still leaving Lorraine County. And 28% of the industry in this county is based upon those plants being here. That's 28% of everything that's made in this county, not talking about the restaurants and the gas stations and the housing. That's just 28% of the manufacturing base depends on those two Ford Motor Company plants up there.
Our unemployment rate has increased in Lorraine County. Isn't it over the state average?
Yes, it is. And I pointed out to the senators' aide yesterday that in the city of Lorraine, it's rapidly approaching 9% in the city of Lorraine, and we're two percentage points above the state average, which is close to the national average in Lorraine County. Now, we need some help, and we need some attention here. It was a good meeting. We spent about an hour and a half together, and I'm going to follow through with this, and we're going to continue to press them to let their voice be known in Lorraine County issues, because they represent us, and we want their backing here.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
That's all, Jim? That's all?
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, so can I press Mr. Hennes?
No report.
Okay. Commissioner's report.
Commissioner Bayes?
None.
None?
No? Old business? We've carried this item in a couple of weeks here to approve and enter into a two-year service agreement with First Communications of Akron, Ohio to provide the county's internet access and email accounts. The total monthly charge is $1,055.43. An agreement does contain a 30-day written cancellation clause. They'd authorize at the present to execute on behalf of the board.
So move.
Second?
Discussion?
Yes. The resolution, my understanding is to have a 30-day written cancellation clause in here. My understanding is, we can cancel it, but we've still got to pay the full 24 months. Does that, did that change since our last discussion? I mean, Jerry, did you? Because we asked about that when the gentleman was here.
That was changed quite a while ago when...
I'm just asking.
Jim Cortez, but...
I...
Was it a true 30-day cancellation, or is there an escape clause that we have to approach?
The previous contract that I saw did indicate that we would have to pay the 24-month services. It mooted the 30-day cancellation.
Exactly.
I believe that that issue was addressed, but I have not seen a subsequent document.
I have a copy here, and it states, "If first communication does not cure the breach, customer may immediately terminate the agreement without incurring any termination charges." They excluded the part that you were questioning.
But that's not a, that's not a 30-day cancellation. That's if heat breaches.
Well, that's, the 30-day cancellation...
Would you, would you bring a copy of that to us, please?
No, I mean, if it's, I mean, we're going to go with the agreement, that's why we're going to save money, but to have 30-day written cancellation clause written in there when we really don't have it? Just call it what it is.
We can always insert it.
No, I don't think that's going to happen.
If they don't accept it, then it's, it voids out the contract. We can...
What's this? This is just written. Someone's notes on here.
This agreement continues to have the penalty of re-terminating.
Okay, that's what I wanted to... Now, you made the motion. Do you want it in there?
No, I, with the understanding that that be removed from the contract, I would amend my motion to include that.
Well, your motion has it in here. An agreement contains the 30... Yeah, you have it in there.
Okay, there's the...
But it's not in...
Well, I want to state that the contract, that whatever's in the contract be excluded and to include the verbiage as it is on the agenda.
So what you want to do is you made the motion to...
Accept.
We want a 30-day cancellation notice.
Accept the verbiage.
You want a 30-day cancellation clause that isn't mooted by the fact that we'd have to pay the contract liquid damage.
Okay, right.
And how about this? How about you including your resolution to authorize Mr. Hennes to insert the language that he feels is appropriate to meet that, the needs of the board or the desires of the board? And then we'll send them a copy. Rather than them sending us, we'll modify this and send it to them. If they agree to it, then we can, we can do business. If they don't, then we're back at ground zero.
Exactly.
Is that acceptable to you, Jerry?
Do we want it to be either, excuse me, either party can terminate or... All of them?
Okay, so my motion will be amended to exclude what's in there, what's in the contract, and for Jerry to amend the contract?
Right, he'll amend, you don't even need to exclude. He'll amend the contract to include a 30-day cancellation, a true 30-day cancellation clause.
Okay, thank you.
Because we'll be a grump. We'll be starting over soon.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Any other old business?
I have none.
I just had a notation as a reminder. The commissioners will meet in special session on Tuesday, September 18th at 9:15 a.m. and will approve the childcare provider payments for August. Close the meeting. Commissioners will then conduct an administrative briefing immediately following to discuss sedentary sore issues and any other business. New business?
No, I don't have any.
I have none. I move for correspondence reading be waived. Second?
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Other comment?
Anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board, and we would ask you, please, to limit your remarks to three minutes if possible. Mr. Kish?
No. Mr. Kish, Hilaria, nobody, but I do have a question of, and I'm glad Mr. Stomati is still here. Have they considered, or maybe it's not considerable, I don't know, I understand response times, but some cars are driven home. Are these the car that would be in hot pursuit? How would I say, driven home, when a car is driven home, doesn't that effectively require more cars than they could possibly get by with? Or possibly, they could take, instead of the road patrol cars, could they take one of these other unmarked cars home if that be the case? So that they could basically save the better cars for the people that are actually on duty on that day? It just seems it'd be more cost-effective if some of these cars weren't just sitting in a driveway. I know it looks nice to see them there. It looks very good, reassuring, but some of these cars that basically, the poorer, cheaper cars that you spoke of down the confiscate, they can be marked also just for transportation to and from work.
Well, we've been working on this program for several years, so I guess it's easy to just come up here and ask a simple question like that. But once again, if you're going to run the cars 16 hours to 24 hours a day, you're adding numerous miles onto them, and obviously, that's a cost for them, because right now, we're holding some of these cars together with this bubble gum and bailing wire. We've had two or three transmissions go out within the last two weeks that my mechanic had to repair, and obviously, to replace a transmission can be anywhere from $1,000 to $2,000. So we do have some support cars that are taken home, but these officers also work all day. They're out on patrol. They're doing the job out there. That's what's keeping the vehicles a little bit better shape, which makes them last a little bit longer. So then we're not replacing 20 cars a year. We're only doing maybe eight or nine.
Thank you, Sheriff. Is there anyone else who would like to comment to the board this morning? Seeing, yes, Thelma Adams. Good morning, Thelma.
Yeah, to the Board of County Commissioners and Thelma Adams, and I would like to bring your attention to an article that was in the Chronicle/Telegram last Friday that really I was appalled by. It states that the county employment agency to be resolved, replaced. Come to find out, this is the ETA agency. Uh, there's a lot of questions, not only I have. And believe me, I think the ones of you that know me, when I come before you, I've done a little homework. So I've talked to other people in the community that's concerned about this. When you have an agency that's going to be resolved, who've been servicing so many people in Lorraine County, even their funding is based on performance. And the more, the reason they're getting more money now is based on the performance that they have been doing. To take that and say, "We're gonna have a different agency," and after you want to put it back under the county, and I'm one of those, went through this like 20 years ago. So I know all about it and how it's done. The only thing, at least, they were fair to the employees at that time when it went from Cedar to the Private Industry Council. Then it went to ETA. Now it's going to something else. We want to know why, we want to know, since there is no shortage of money, why this has to be changed and having Mr. Cordez interim director? If Mr. Cordez is gonna be the interim director for how long? Why is this in midstream? What experience does Mr. Cordez have in employment, in training, in skill training, putting people into jobs? What have they done wrong? Or is this just a power play? Because that is an agency where we do have an Afro-American that's director. We have people in that agency who have been there 25 and 26 years. They were there when it was the old Cedar program and I was there. And now all it wants for those people to receive a letter like the one that I saw dated September the 12th telling them that September the 28th, they will be terminated and will no longer have a job? At least when they did it the last time, when the employers was given a letter, they were given their rights that they had to appeal the decision. You just, is that what you get for loyalty? And I just couldn't believe when they said this was unanimously approved by the County Commissioners, that they would allow this to happen and not have any regards for people who have put in that much time with the county, through thick and thin, through all the changes, was tor, been torched about from being under one system to a nonprofit organization and back under the county, whatever, they stayed. And I don't think this is the way that you reward those people who have been there and thank God that I'm not there and thank God that after the last time what happened, things worked out much better. You know, God takes care of folks, too. But you can't expect people that's been there that long to get a two-week notice. Their fiscal year usually ends June 30th. Why is this in midstream? Why is the person given, or agency given 30 days to resolve, "Get out of here, you're gone." Who's going to take it over? Who's going to be the new director? Is Mr. Cordez going to be the new director also? Or who is it going to be? And to tell these people, "You just no longer have a job?" And then the paper also states, "Nine jobs in Lorraine County Employment Training Administration, however, could be cut in the process," said Mr. Cordez. Now, they only have 14 employees. You cut nine, that only leaves five. So what are we gonna do? Play some political palm in here and just put in who we want to keep? There's questions that need to be answered to this community. And this is just the beginning of it because people are going to be asking, "What's going on? What was the reason? It's not because the, the money, or there was a shortage. It's not because they're not performing. Is this a power play?" And that's what I would like these Commissioners, because they are elected, not you, Mr. Cordez, to answer to the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions, Thelma. I'll go backwards with respect to the comments you made about no regard for the employees. Perhaps it appears that way to you, but it's certainly not that way on the part of this board. This decision was made publicly at our meeting last Thursday. I think we met here until about 2:30 in the afternoon. I didn't bring any of my documentation with me, so I'll just give you a brief, few brief comments. Perhaps the other Commissioners might wish to talk about this, too. I think probably this whole issue started with a change in the Workforce Investment Board, which is the board now that's an advisory board that will make recommendations to the Commissioners with respect to how we spend federal and state dollars. A couple of months ago, this board determined to change who was the fiscal agent of that department. And we awarded that plum, and I'll say plum because it's not a plum. We awarded that responsibility to the Department of Job and Family Services under Mary Lugolsky. The administrative part of it, we awarded to then, the then ETA. Subsequent to that, we did a lot of more investigation. There was some question about who actually was the ETA and, and who was in charge. And we commissioned Clemens Nelson and Associates to do a study. And they reported back to us and the prosecutor and the administrator that in fact, the ETA is a, a nonprofit that is governed by a board and we do not direct the activities of that nonprofit board. The employees that you spoke of, the 13 employees, are all employees of that now, what I think is now, is what needs to be defunct ETA because there are new requirements and different ways of doing business. And, um, the, uh, last year, when the focus of this changed, the, the Board of Commissioners gave all the responsibility to the ETA, who in turn contracted for a lot of these services with the One Stop. And we have a report from the State Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, which says, again, I have no paperwork in front of me, but that says this is a duplication of effort. And they have done an audit and they have asked that those, um, functions be defined. Or this is the report as it stands. Clearly, there's a red flag that goes up to me about the way business is done in Lorraine County. Not that anyone has done anything illegal or, uh, with inappropriate spending of dollars, but clearly, uh, the, the way we are doing business, the amount of money that is being spent for administrative services, and in our discussion last week, we talked about the money. And there is a 10% amount that's given back. And as I reflect, that 10% was something in the neighborhood of $240,000. Yet we were spending well over $500,000 for administration of this program. The programs, as I understand them, are to help in the employment and training of individuals who have a job change in their life so that they can be more fully employed someplace else. It is not to merely enhance, um, the, uh, the providers of the program. And when that, and when that gets out of balance, then it's our responsibility to in fact, look at that. This has not been an easy decision. And it's been a series of decisions that this board has made. And I just want to say to you personally, all three members of this board are members of the Workforce Investment Board. I have attended each of their meetings. And each time, this board does something that's a little, uh, different from what we've done in the past, I'm called on the carpet and asked to explain it. And I've tried to be very open with the former ETA board. I've tried to be open with the, uh, employees there, although this last, last week. How do you, how do you tell somebody that they don't have a job? I don't know. We've been required to do that through the instrument that's been given. It's a nonprofit. It's their responsibility to run this. And I think it's their responsibility to close up shop. And in addition to that, you asked about Mr. Cordez being interim director, the direction that we took last week. Um, we've given a timeframe, hopefully within 30 days, that this agency can wrap up its business. It is the intention of this board that Mr. Ogil, who is the, uh, director now of the ETA, will become a county employee. And he has given us a list of four names of employees that he would like to retain under this department. The focus is to, um, we have the Lorraine County Job and Family Services, which has a director, which answers to the board, and it's run similar to that. And, and I believe that's the pattern that we are attempting to, um, follow. Those are my off-the-cuff remarks. My intention's not to offend anybody, you know, the buck stops here. And this isn't a very popular job sometimes. Does the board have any other comments that you'd like to?
No, but I know that, you know, we talked about this at length at our, at our meeting. And I know a lot of those people because I was also on the PICD council. And a lot of those people that were employed, are employed there now, were on PICD, were employed there when I was on PICD council many years ago. So I know them personally. And it really bothered me, especially knowing that they wouldn't have any unemployment because then nonprofit did not pay into unemployment for these people.
Mr. Vassie, I believe that the prosecutor and Mr. Hennes have talked to that agency and they are in fact, going to receive unemployment benefits.
Now, how are we gonna receive it?
I have, uh, been constant dialogue with, uh, Mr. Ogil. And he has indicated to me that he spoke with the state and that they'll be eligible for unemployment benefits.
Who's gonna cover them? The state?
I, I didn't go, that's what I'm assuming. I, I just simply, uh, was, that, that information was provided to me from Mr. Ogil.
Well, I know last week when we talked about it, it wasn't available to them at that time. And I'm glad to hear that it is now. But even, we even talked about moving them into other areas of employment. But they were just not county employees. They're, they weren't county employees.
I, I think that needs to be expanded upon. Uh, the notices that went out did not come from this board. The actions that were taken were not taken by this board. This board, this board is not the employer of record. Something that hasn't been pointed out, that, that really does need to be pointed out, is that this nonprofit stopped functioning as a legitimate nonprofit two years ago. This is the classic case of, you know, somebody owning a business with no family, the person dies, the employees love the person, they put them to rest, and they go back to work and keep the business running. There is no legitimate employer here.
That was the whole problem. That's how we had to base our decision.
Uh, if I may... Uh, Thelma, you must come to the microphone, please.
Uh, what I'm saying is that you have some of the employees there. And I know it's about five of them. Not because of any of their doing. They did whatever the system was directed. They were county employees right downstairs, Mr. Cordez, in this building before you was here. They were county employees.
But they're not county employees now and they haven't been county employees since 1980. But you're making statements that are incorrect, Ms. Adams.
I think in the interest of accuracy, we want to give out the proper information.
Yes, that is why I'm saying, they were county employees.
But as Mr. Cordez said, they are not now.
Yeah, then it, it was changed.
Yes.
And so this is why I had mentioned my original remarks about them being, you know, torched about wherever they, uh, were directed to go. That's the way the employees had to go.
And I think there was a great deal of discussion about the director of that agency and in fact, whose employee he, he was. And, uh, we had differences of opinion here, which is why we sought to find out from someone who had more knowledge about it. And this report that was put together for our benefit outlines the history of this agency, how it started, when it changed, and it, it's a timeline. And I will be happy to share that with you at the conclusion of this meeting. There's some very important information in there and, and we could not, not address that information.
By the same token, I think the bottom line will be that, uh, we don't know what five is going to be.
Excuse me, we don't know what, what?
Five individuals talking about. But I do feel that, uh, the, the seniority of these people should count as something. And I think, uh, some of you, at least two of you Commissioners, know the ones that have been with the county when it was under the county. And not being told, well, that there's a possibility of any of them stayed or not, I think is what really upset them also, which is what upset anyone.
And I could fully understand that, Thelma. You know, this is a, we are a business, even though we're government. And this is a downsizing. You don't like to look at these terms, okay? And you don't like it when it happens to people who are your personal friends.
Commissioner Blair, may I, I see Mr. Hennes wants to make a comment, but I need to clarify something, Ms. Adams. We're not keeping five employees. We're not keeping five employees. So I want to clarify that right now. Mr. Ogil has made a recommendation on three employees that he feels he needs to continue the work of the ETA as a governmental entity. And, and that would include those three and him for a total of four. I don't want to, uh, misrepresent how many employees. My understanding now...
The paper said nine would be cut and nine subtracted. Nine and fourteen.
And that's what they...
Right.
Well, it's 13, I thought.
I, once again, we're bringing, just, and I'm not trying to be argumentative. I just wanted to clarify what you, so that you have the correct information. Also, it's my understanding that the One Stop may be employing some of those people that are working at ETA right now because they're providing services to the One Stop. Uh, and we have had dialogue with them to, to encourage them to, to employ some of those people that are providing those services. There's a lot more going on, I think, than can be printed in a Chronicle/Telegraph article. Uh, and I'd be more than happy to, to discuss those things at any time with you.
Gene Rice.
Gene Rice, I'm from Lorraine. This is not my city. Thank goodness. Because I'm really upset what I see going on. And sir, your attitude is not good at all. It's not good. You are serving us. You are being paid. Least you can do is be respectful for people when they try and express themselves. My concern is, I wanna know who these three people are. And I hope to heaven, some of them's gonna be a black American. If not, you haven't heard anything yet. We are tired, people. These are our tax dollars. And it seems to me when everything is phased out, who get phased out? Enough is enough. Please, whoever's in charge of this, I'll be watching you. You know Gene Rice don't play. I don't care who, I have to call in. It would be done fairly.
I, I would hope, Gene, that it would be done fairly for everybody's perspective. Is there anyone else who would like to comment to the board? Reverend Peter Tower, good morning.
Peter Tower, reside, 1005 East State National Street, Lorraine, Ohio. And this is kinda new for me. I missed, I missed reading the newspaper a few days ago, so I didn't get a chance to pick it up off the newspaper. So, uh, I'd like to know how many minorities are being terminated, uh, these 13 employees? How many are minorities? I also like to know. Now, that you say they were not county employees, is the county responsible for the ETA funds that comes into the county? We come to the county, are you responsible for? Are you allocated out somewhere?
Goes through, uh, Mar-a-Luz Department, but it does come through the county.
The, the funding originates with the, the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services. Then a contract for the funding is, is done, or has previously been done with, with ETA and through ETA with the One Stop. Uh, the board is an approving authority on, on the movement of those funds. I, I'm not sure if that answered your question, sir, because that's the way I'm understanding your question.
I'd like to know. I just wanted to know if the county were responsible for allocating the money out, uh, uh, disbursement of money when it come into the county. Can they, say like the, uh, Community Action Agency, do they get that money directly from the federal government or do they get their money from the county Commissioners as well?
Okay, Community Action Agency, uh, money goes to Community Action Agency. And, and the money that goes to ETA or has previously gone to ETA does come through the county?
It comes through the county.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I understand your question.
Next thing, these 13 employees, what's your plan to do with them? Just terminate them, assess them?
They're not our employees.
They're not our employees. Once again, sir, they're not our employees.
Sir, you say they're not your employees?
No.
I wanna, I'll...
Uh, let Mr. Hennes respond to this. Reverend Tower, please.
Uh, if I can try to explain a very complicated issue. Back when this original organization formed, they were county employees. Then, and I need to emphasize this, not the county Commissioners, the federal government changed the law and formed these PIC organizations and took them out from being county employees and, and put them into this quasi-governmental entity. And, and this nonprofit corporation was formed. And they then became employees of that nonprofit organization. They ceased being county employees at that time. That has continued on through the years. Now, two years ago, the federal government, again, not the county Commissioners, dissolved these PICs. They went out of existence. Okay? Unfortunately, as, as happened, there, there wasn't any explanation as to now, what do you do with these employees? What do you do with this organization? They dissolved it. It's gone. The nonprofit corporation, as far as we can, can determine, no longer exists. And that's why Mr. Cordez sits there and says, "These people are employed by what appears to be a non-existent entity. They are not employed by Lorraine County." Mr. Cordez has explained to you that we work with them through contracts and we have now discovered we're contracting with a non-existent entity. We cannot continue to do that. So, this entity is out there and what they need to do with their employees is out of our hands. What we have said to Mr. Ogil is we are prepared to offer employment and bring as many of those people in as we can. And I'm gonna tell you, we, we met with ETA members three months ago and the Commissioners have struggled desperately to find as many places as they can for these people. And I think they'll try to do what they can in the future. But we are, uh, and I think our intentions are to try to, you know, we told Mr. Ogil, "As soon as you can wrap up what you're doing with them, we're prepared to bring you on here." Um, but he's, he's... But he's, he's got to end that association there before we can hire him on, so that's where we are. We have not terminated anybody, they are not our employees. We have said, we will hire as many of these people as we can, but, um, there's limits as to what we can do.
So you're saying, you did not terminate them, but you just defund them? You just defund the organization?
What we're saying is, there's no organization out there, there's no legal entity out there.
So ETA was not neither?
Two years ago, it ceased to exist, technically. There are no, there are no articles of incorporation on file with the-
May I have a list of the, may I have a list of the employees that are being terminated?
I have to get that from Bill.
I think you would need to get that, I'm, I'm, the list of employees who are being terminated is available from Mr. Ogil. Bill Ogil has that list. He is responsible for handling that.
I think the bottom line here is that we can't contract with an agency that doesn't exist. They're not a legal entity, and, and government can't contract with an agency that is not a legal entity.
Commissioner Basie, you said it was, uh, uh, didn't exist two years ago.
Right.
And so if it didn't exist two years ago, how did you fund it last year, the year before last?
Well, they, we funded the One Stop.
And sudden stops that once this year.
We funded One Stop, and they funded ETA.
Reverend Tower, you funded, you One Stop, and One Stop funded ETA?
ETA, so there was the problem right there. Could they fund?
Well, well, that, that's not-
They did it by a series of agreements, and I think that's a report that came from the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, that reviewed these agreements and the working relationship, and alluded to the duplication of services.
Exactly, that's one of the problems, what you mentioned, sir, is one of the problems, is the, the relationship in those two years is, 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 uh, suspect. It, it, it shouldn't have been, and, and that's one of the issues that we were discussing. That's why we called in legal counsel, and there was a lot of people involved in reviewing this whole process, on the flow of funds, and whether we were legally able to contract with this entity. When they went out of, when they became defunct by federal legislation, the whip board came into existence, but they're, they're a different entity than the prior PIC council was, and I think before that, Thelma, was it JTPA, I think it was, before that, and it goes all the way back to Cedar, but the last legislation did not include a provision for a governing and hiring board and so forth, and I guess to answer your question, is should we have been doing that the last two years? I don't think so, sir.
I don't think so either, so thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Tower. Anyone else who wants to comment? I move the Board of Commissioners goes into executive session to discuss the personnel new hire issues as outlined by the administrator.
Saika?
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Bassett?
Aye.